Welcome, everybody, to the regular and first of the year school committee meeting, September 10th, 2014. Calling the meeting to order at 6:01. As always, first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And if there are no objections, we'll consider the warrants from September 12th, 2014, the warrants from the summer of 2014, as well as the minutes from June 17th, 2014 approved.
I have an issue.
Okay.
On the motion for the $150,000.
What's the subject?
New business.
The what?
New business. End of the year, end of the year transfers.
Okay.
I know it says end of the year, end of the year transfers, but it doesn't say that, you know, just when you're reading it, it looks like we're taking money out of the health insurance line to take it out. So it's surplus.
From the overage. Oh, from the overage.
It's what we call an overage.
That's what it was, right? It was last year.
Yeah, I don't have the minute right up.
You want it?
It says health insurance.
And then we don't say what happens to, because I thought we discussed what was going to happen with the money if we did not vote to approve the trust or to do OPEB.
Yeah, that's okay. What happens is that's encumbered. Hopefully, next month, we will have the trust document. But the money's encumbered, which has to be done in fiscal year. So, yes, it was from the overage, but a potential overage, money we weren't going to spend. But my dismotion was made, it was within the fiscal year. So that's the proper thing. It would come to $150,000 for expenditure. If it's ultimately not expended, like a lot of money we encumber is not expended before the end of fiscal year, it will be released and then it goes back to free cash, which are E and D, exactly like it went in the other year. I had to do it encumbered months ago.
So you're saying that at the end of the school year, that the $150,000 might not have been encumbered? Might not have been available?
No, it's encumbered right now. And the answer to the question, if we don't spend it, the encumbrages are released. It can't be spent on anything else. They'll have the same process occur to it that would happen if we did not make that motion whatsoever. In other words, if we did not make that motion in June, that money would have closed out to our E and D certification.
Oh, so it's not an E and D?
It's not an E and D.
And it won't go to E and D?
Unless we don't put it ultimately in the trust, if we don't vote the trust document, then it then would be encumbered and released, and then it goes to FY 15.
So how do we establish the trust?
We just, I'm still trying to get some of that cleared out with our accounting. So hopefully, have that next time when the time out.
Okay, because I think the whole point of that was to start to establish, and not only just the goodwill, but the, you know, it's a smart move.
Yeah, exactly. And it had to be voted here, it was in the fiscal year. It had to be encumbered during the fiscal year by the school committee, which it was. And that's all that's happened so far.
Okay, so next time, hopefully, we'll have an update on the trust. Okay, thanks.
So essentially, it's okay that it says health insurance line.
That's where it was from.
That's where it was from.
It was from the de facto overage. In other words, we didn't have to spend that money, the surplus, because of the reasons we discussed. But it was appropriation from that line in that year.
But does, I think, is your question, do we have to indicate that's fiscal year 14, not current year? We're in 15 right now.
We're in 15 now.
So was that your question?
Well, I don't know if this heading takes care of it, because it's a different motion. So I'm not really sure how, because I just want to make sure it's clear, that, what it is and where it's going. That was the only thing I had.
Well, it's going to an OPEB trust, fund an OPEB trust, subject to the approval of the trust by the school committee. So that refers to the fact it hasn't yet been established.
Okay, so if it's not established, it just goes right to E and D 15?
If it's not established. Right, if it's not established, the only thing that money can be spent for is deposited into an OPEB trust.
So do you have to put a date of when? I mean, could we leave it?
Well, I think the overall setting is, it's, we got the FY 14, end of the year. I mean, I think it discusses an introductory power. This is FY 14 money, so I mean.
I mean, regardless, accounting practices will take whatever we have as a, an end-of-the-year balance and put it forth into E and D. So if we don't go through the process and establish the OPEB, that money will get swept into our E and D.
Yeah, we don't have that. So is an OPEB at this point one of our goals?
It's one of the tasks we're going to achieve, yes.
It's a task. Okay, so do we need to put a date to this at all? I mean, or is this just, we're just going to assume that it's, it happens this year, we're just going to let it go into 15 as E and D?
It's going to require a further vote in the school committee to appropriate, to approve the trust. Once the trust is approved, then that money, by virtue of that motion, will go into the trust.
But we, but how long do we wait to take the vote for the OPEB before the money gets kind of running?
Well, we need to get the documents. I'm just, we need to get the proper documents, make sure there's the proper documents. I would hope it would be within the next one to two meetings. I just want to check a few things out about it to make sure we have, the first people we check with make it seem a little bit simpler, and I think it is. So I just want to follow up on that. Maybe it is, and that'll be great. So once-
Well, you don't want to do it wrong.
Right, I don't want to do it wrong. Right, exactly, right. So therefore, once we have the, I'm confident in the right documents, the school committee will vote to establish the trust. If you vote to establish the trust, by virtue of that vote, in the wording in that motion, that money will automatically flow into the trust. If you vote not to establish the trust, for whatever reason, that money would then be released, the encumbrage would be released, and the money would go to free cash E and D.
And the timeline is the fiscal year. So by June 30th, it has to be done.
Oh, good.
One way or the other.
Okay, that's what I wanted to time out.
Can I just, one thing on the Gay-Straight Alliance student presentation. I think the, what the kids really wanted isn't accurately portrayed here, and maybe we can make a quick change, but I went back to my notes, too. The real crux of it is that they want to influence the health curriculum, and I wrote it down, on LGBT topics and influence creation of self-awareness and self-acceptance for everyone. So they want to broaden the health curriculum. That was the point of it. And it's not just on the Gay-Straight Alliance. It's certainly topics that influence or affect the Gay-Straight Alliance, but really, the influence of the health curriculum was across the self-awareness and self-acceptance spectrum for the district. So it doesn't matter if you're gay, or you're straight, or you're a certain nationality, or you're a certain religion. That was the point of it. So I, I'm sure it's a small piece, but with all the effort that they've put into it and where they want to go with it, I just want to respectfully make sure that we have it moved there. So we need to change the wording from, to be more inclusive of gay students to be more inclusive of non-students? Well, the point is to broaden the health curriculum to GSA topics and influence self-awareness and acceptance across all, I don't even know how to say it.
Nationalities?
Yeah, well, yeah, it's nationalities, race, creed, color, sexual orientation. Okay. Alita, do you have that?
Okay, thank you. Everybody else happy with that? I'm fine with it. Okay, thank you. Lynn, were you done?
Yep.
Anyone else on the consent agenda? I'm just going to sneak in a little, something that didn't really make the agenda for whatever reason, but just wanted to remind everybody where we left off last year, who's on what subcommittee, when they meet, and making sure everybody's, you know, happy with the new date and time and place and feels supported and we're ready to go with the new year.
That's a lot.
Sorry?
That's a lot.
I know. First off, well, I just thought I would remind everybody what subcommittees they're on. Personnel is myself, Julie Fay, and Nicole. Policy is Lorraine, Lynn, and Kara. And finance and facilities is Maureen, Kathy, and Nicole.
Yeah, I thought I was on policy.
Yeah, Nicole, Lorraine.
Wait a minute, okay.
It's posted in the packet.
Did I just read it differently than the packet said?
Lynn's live on policy this year. She's on finance.
Is that right, Lynn?
That's where you put me. That's not what I asked for, but that's where you put me.
I know, but I thought that that's, I thought you got what you wanted. Where is this?
This is from our meeting.
Was that what everybody thought? The way it's in the packet? Is that what you thought?
Yeah, I had to refresh my memory, too. It's from the packet.
Okay. Well, I'm glad we went through this exercise. Glad pipe for me and nothing else. Okay, and the calendar is out and in everybody's packet, so hopefully, we can put everybody's meetings in well in advance, like I neglected to do for tonight, had to rearrange some things.
When do, when do all the subcommittees meet? Do we know?
We'll get a calendar out for those as well. I'll send emails to those people who are on there, and we'll set.
But it is, the policy meetings are set.
Right.
It's on the calendar.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock on what day? Wednesday's.
The off Wednesday of ours.
Right.
And personnel, we meet sporadically. Yeah, as needed, so we don't have those scheduled very far in advance. We actually need to schedule something very soon. So Alita, maybe you can help us with that. And then finance, facilities, meets prior to all of our regular meetings at 5:45 here. Earlier, we have something.
Big discussion.
Yes, absolutely. And then all the other small assignments that we have here on our subcommittee assignment sheets. Every other thing has its own life and meeting times and not so far scheduled in advance. In the tri-town meetings, we're still going to stick with the idea that hopefully, at least one member, if not two, from the town that it's taking place in will be able to go along with either Michael or George. And hopefully, that continues to work. We'll find out if they continue to be monthly or not. And those are on Wednesdays, too?
Yes, first, usually, the first Wednesday of the month, although there's some conversation to push it quarterly, so, or possibly bimonthly.
So I'll have a, I'll have a conflict every first Wednesday of the month, because I'm on a committee at the high school. So if I have to not be on that committee, that's okay, but the only time they meet is the first Wednesday of the month.
Okay. I also wonder if it ever hits on one of our meetings, the first Wednesday. Probably does.
They will be accomplished.
There will be a couple of times.
Okay. I checked because of the, just another reason why it would be really beneficial to move to quarterly instead of monthly. And I think that, I think it only makes sense. Monthly seems to be more than enough. Anything else, organizational, housekeeping stuff, anybody wants to bring up? This is a fine time to do it. Then move on to correspondence. Anybody have any? I know some people did, because I look back at.
I did have a number of kindergarten correspondences, but I don't know if we want to talk about that now or when we get to the kindergarten updates.
Oh, can wait.
Okay, yes, great.
As long as you should chime in those.
There was a couple Julie and I got from different parents, and then about report cards. There's a Burbank report cards, I don't know if there's some confusion that-
What was the topic?
Correspondence.
That, so the first one I sent, and you qualified that letter grades aren't going away, and then we sub, and I replied exactly the way I understood it and confirmed. But then we got more calls saying teachers were saying their kids were being told by next year that letter grades will be gone, even from the top level. So they were wondering, and I'm like, no.
Grades are here.
Grades are here, just, and I'll just cut and paste.
And that was the same topic that Julie had received?
Yeah, so Julie, we were talking about correspondence. And there might be a little miscommunication with some of the teachers, maybe, that grades are not going away.
Yeah, I actually talked to Pat Perkins about it, and he's sort of gotten to the bottom of it. He thinks that perhaps not the whole staff was there when they discussed it. So I think teachers were there, but maybe not all the paraprofessionals. And I think some of the information, that's where it's getting confusing.
The paraprofessionals.
So he's clearing it up.
All right. So we're all at that one. Excellent. Thanks for coming in. Any other correspondence? Anybody?
I have had a request, actually, three emails. It might sound trivial, but that we have several signs at the high school, at the athletic fields, that no dogs are allowed, yet people consistently bring their dogs. Not sure who to, who's the police for this. And asks if the school committee could please make a policy that they can refer to when asking people to please not bring their dogs in the property.
I think that's a great idea. I had poop in my car this week. Not kidding. That issue.
Well, yeah, and there's dogs that are consistently there, the same lovely little feline friends, but not.
Well, I've had comments in the past about those signs, too, but actually, the opposite. Complaints that the sign says, "No trespassing." There's a sign coming up onto the soccer field from the trail that comes from Foxtrot that says, "No trespassing." And many people find that offensive, because I understand why. I mean, it's, you know, it's school, public property, and the fact that it says, "No trespassing," is somewhat disturbing.
But I think, "No dogs allowed" is different than "No trespassing."
Right. Well, I know, but there's two signs there. There's a "No dog" sign, but there's also a "No trespassing" sign.
So should we take the "No trespassing" down?
Well, the trespassing, we're specifically to the turf field.
Well, this isn't on the turf field.
It's common comment.
It's on the soccer field.
It's on, it's on the back of the soccer field?
Yes.
It's probably very old.
It's on a very sturdy post. It's a pretty big sign, a metal sign, and it says, "No trespassing." It's on the, you know, the soccer field.
Yeah.
It's on the opposite side of the soccer field from-
On the Foxtrot side.
Exactly.
Like, yeah, coming from the-
From the trail.
From the trail, right?
Yeah.
As soon as you come onto the property, you encounter the sign.
You're probably up there.
Right, as opposed to like right before you get to the turf.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so no one here knows that was on the real field.
Those complaints, I had gotten about that particular sign, are old, but that was just there last week, and the sign's still there.
Yeah, I think there's signs that are like on the turf that says, "No dogs allowed." And I think there's a few, a few different places, actually.
Just want to write the address to-
But all the fields.
In all the fields, yeah.
It should be for all the fields.
Right.
It should be, definitely.
Yeah, the "No dogs" thing is-
And you can't do a whole lot with the word, "No one's there," but when you're sitting in the stands, and there's two dogs next to you, sitting down, I mean, they're fine, cute little dogs, but, "It says, 'No dogs allowed.'"
Yeah.
So they ask if that could be a policy made, so at least they have a reference.
We could ask the coaches to disseminate that. So on, when I, when I travel with my daughter's soccer team, the fields on the website for soccer, for Nishoba soccer, say, "This field allows dogs and this field doesn't." So we could have it updated right on that website as well. That's, that's how, you know, people know if they can bring their dogs or not. And I don't think it says, "No dogs allowed."
It doesn't on our website, yeah.
Well, not on our website. It's literally on the Nishoba U-Soc. So when we go to play a game, you look up the field, and right on it, it says, "Dogs are not allowed."
Right.
So it's a shared website.
Yeah, so when people go to our site and look for the Addos to our field, maybe.
Yeah.
But I, it'd say, "I don't think it's, guess."
Right, no.
But if our coaches tell the kids, too, I think if the coaches tell the parents, too. I think the coaches should tell the parents, too.
Well, it's got to be concerted effort from everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So how can we do that?
Yeah, you bring up a good point. So who polices that?
Yeah, so that's, I mean-
So that's the hard part.
It was like some of, like the staff there saying, you know, "How much policing am I in charge of? Do I need to go up to every dog, or am I saying, 'Do you know that there's no dogs allowed?'" Well, clearly, they do, because they're sitting in front of the sign.
Right, right.
You know, I mean, and then what do I do about it? If I say, "Hey, there's no dogs allowed," and they sit there?
Yeah.
You know?
That would be our first policy action. It isn't written in policy, it's just a practice that we've had for the signs.
Right.
But, yeah, we can take it there.
So we're going to do a policy, and then, once the policy is done, we can send an email to maybe all the coaches that use the fields, not just the high school coaches at all, to try to ask the parents, maybe?
Right, we can put that out.
So then Tanya might be to disseminate the information to all the people who rent the facility?
Mm-hmm, definitely. Yeah, we put it on our website.
So they're not allowed on the fields or school grounds?
Well, we prefer they not come on school grounds, because the remnants can be on the parking lot, I mean, anywhere.
There's a lot of schools that say, "No dogs allowed."
Yeah, no dogs on property, yeah.
"No dogs allowed," yeah.
I mean, there are allergy issues.
Unless it's a police dog.
Yes, unless it's a police dog. A service animal, of course, is always allowed.
Seeing eye dog.
Right, they are, absolutely.
I don't want to eat that school committee.
Yeah.
That's the owner of the dog. Wow, good stuff in correspondence.
I don't know if we talked about this at all, but I also got several emails about social media issues. And I think we all got the emails, so things like Perry is on top of it.
Yes. So that was good.
That was a good one. It was, it was eye opening. I was totally oblivious to it.
Conversation with my-
Yeah. Luckily, my seventh grader had no idea what it was. He said, "Okay, that's just me." And I said, "It is."
I don't think I'm aware of this.
It's, and I'm happy to make this pub, it's an app called Yek Yek, and as far as I'm concerned, this is my personal opinion, there's an open forum for bullying, where they're totally anonymous, no one is held accountable. And if you, I downloaded the app to see what it was, because I had no idea. It's horrifying. It names kids' names. It's, it's, it's so disturbing to me, I was like such an uproar about it. And I can't, and then if you're in this area, you get most of them to Nishoba stuff and maybe a little stuff over this way. If I, so if I was in Lancaster, it pulls up a stream of, and it's mostly high school kids, but if I can identify several names, I'm certainly sure the kids can know, knows who they're talking about, too.
Sure.
But then I was in Clinton, and it's a whole nother stream.
It's GPS.
It's GPS, really. So it depends on where you are, of what it, but there's no names. But then, another disturbing thing is you can put a handle in for your name, so I could list, someone could list Julie Fay and write as if I'm typing this stuff. So it's terrible. So there's a few kids that are listed as this, and you know darn well, no one would say that about themselves.
Right.
So I, and I'm thinking, because I'm in the college mindset, you look this up, your kid's name comes up, and says all these horrible things. Kids have lost scholarships and all kinds of stuff because of dumb mistakes on the internet. And so I don't know what we can do about that. I've been trying to research all day, how do you erase a YAK, because I think it's what they call it? And I can't figure it out.
Well, and Perry's email alluded to this, they're getting it-
Well, you can't access it on school ground. I happened to check it at 5:00. There's seven more tweets about Nishoba. Four were very positive, three were not. So they can't do it at school, but they're going home, and they're writing the same things about the same kids, and it's awful. There's kids that, it's really affecting very badly, even three weeks of school, they don't want to be there because of stuff like this. It's bad. It's really bad.
Perry's dying to say something over there.
Yeah, people, it's all the time. You can do it at school if you turn GPS, you can use it at school, people use it at school all the time. I've like seen kids get like really, really upset about it.
It's terrible.
Yeah, that people say like really, really bad things, but it's, it's super popular. Like, everybody uses it. I don't think, like, I don't, I don't really know how we're going to legislate against it, just because everybody has it on their personal phone, they're not using the school network for or anything.
Right, so it seems like if you use your cellular data, obviously, you can use it. But if you, you can't access it through the school wifi anymore. There is a, you can block it through there.
Right.
But it did block, it does block you. But it's blocking me right now.
There's a, there's a way around it, though.
But are you hooked up to wifi, or you?
I'm on my own wifi, but I mean, my own plan, but it says you appear to be using this too close to a school.
Right.
Oh.
There's a way to, by contacting the company, to have the, a certain perimeter, I don't know the exact distances, around a school to be blocked.
That's great.
So, you know, you maybe-
But you're saying you can get around it?
People just turn off their GPS, and then you can just, yeah.
But if you turn off your GPS, you have to have location services on, it won't work.
There's a way around it.
Don't say this out loud. So did Perry have it turned off?
He was working to get it turned off today. He just learned that it was turned back on.
Oh.
He's not sure.
Oh, maybe her peaks.
We don't need to have them there.
No. It's okay.
Not that anyone's watching us, it's just-
People do watch.
I think we're supposed to watch.
Any other correspondence? No, okay. Now, we also have future meeting agenda items here, which is an odd place to have it, but it happens there because the topic came up with, with these correspondences, what our next action steps are going to be, and sometimes that leads to ideas for the next agenda. I think that's why it's here. I think it makes sense to have that at the end of the agenda, but it's there, so, does anybody have any?
I have one.
Yeah.
So I wrote down the list of open items from last year, so maybe next meeting, we can go through them, because I just had them from my notebook, so they might be wrong, I might have not had information in them, they might be closed, so maybe we'll do that at the next meeting.
At the next meeting, okay. Yeah, because I was hoping we'd have an opportunity to talk about that, because I wasn't sure what to do. Am I supposed to do something on that?
Well, if I, I just took it from my notebook, so hopefully, from now on, I'll take them during the meeting, and I'll just check with you, did I capture this? Is this an open item? Or you can say, "Hey, put an open item in the list," and I'll put it in the list, you know? But that's just old stuff, because I never did it last year. You know what I mean?
Okay.
I went through it. Yeah. And some things might be already closed, you know? We'll just clean it once and then from now on, like, I put one thing in to make sure that we have a further vote needed for the trust. So at least that'll be an open item. And then the other one was make sure that the policy committee creates a sign for no dogs and updates the no trespassing sign and we send a coach's note. So I'll just stick it on the open items list and it'll just stay there until it's done. So then we don't forget all these things we do and say and mean to do. Is that all right?
Yep, it's good.
Okay.
I need to get that from my house.
Believe me, I have more spreadsheets at my house, it doesn't help.
Okay, then moving along to superintendent's report, Michael?
Yes, uh, well, other than the, the Yek Yek conversation, overall, our, our school opened very well. And lots of exciting things that are going on. I'm gonna talk about kindergarten in, in a bit. I think that the, the best thing is that the buildings opened very well with very limited issues related to scheduling. We didn't have any kids without schedules, which is a good thing. And we didn't have any kids, at least reported to me, missed by their buses or anything of that sort, which is always the first day jitter that we, that I go through. So that was all, I think, very, a sign of, of the good planning and the execution of that planning on the first day. We have open houses coming up right away, so please, parents and community members that want to attend those, take a look at their schedules. We work hard not to have any conflicts with one another as our own schools and create those. We do know, obviously, that they, they sometimes can occur because families are, you know, have different age groups of students, but I think for the most part, we've covered ourselves pretty well. Thank you for sharing those emails about the kindergarten. As soon as I learned about it, we did resolve it, need to resolve it, and I think we have resolved it. So that our kindergarten, the issue that arose was that our kindergartens across the district have specials as part of them. And the schedule that got, that got created for our half-day students who are now part of the full-day program ended up with only essentially a half, half of the specials that were allotted. And we did discuss that they would have the same schedule as all half-days had previously. So, I sent the principals back and said, you have to reschedule these so that it's gonna happen. So that's been done and they will flip, as they have in the past, at, the, the schedule will flip, not the kids, in January. So they'll get three at the beginning of the year, three at the, in the second half of the year, which is how it works. And so, so I think that's been resolved. I've got a lot of positive feedback from parents who had emailed me earlier, so I think that's been fixed.
So is that how it was in previous years?
Yes, with, with a couple of exceptions. We had a couple of years of only one class of a half-day. And to meet contractual obligations, they had a shortened period of specials with all the specials. So, there, there are a couple of kids who will have a history, who are now in third and fourth grade, who had that. But traditionally, it's been a half-day, you, you had it in the morning and then you have, had the ones that were offered in the afternoon. So...
Admittedly, I only talked to two parents who have older kids who were in half-day before. But a hundred percent of them said that they had a full special.
Full complement?
Full con, thank you. Full complement when they were, when their older child was in, in kindergarten. So...
Were they, were they this, were they a half-day class that was only half-day in that building?
Yes.
Yeah.
They were, they...
The only half-day class, though?
Oh, I, I don't think so.
Oh, okay.
It still only had one half-day class.
But we've only got full day for not that many years.
Well, nine.
Yeah, it's my son, I, there was no option, a full day. Maybe it was half-day.
Right, we've had it for nine years.
So, those two families did have, you know, when they went two or three years ago, their older child did have a full, full range of specials.
I'd really have to look at the schedules to, because I, I don't know that we had enough staff to do it that way for our half-day classes. So, I'm not sure if it's possible to do it that way.
So, how is that gonna work? So you'll have three specials in the morning and then you'll have additional specials in the afternoon?
Right, which is the way we do it now. I mean, they've always done it.
But it doesn't make any sense because you'll have three specials in the morning. And then the whole class will get the three specials. And then they'll get the remainder in the afternoon. And then the following, in January or February when you switch, you'll have four specials in the morning.
The, the afternoon ones will come in the morning.
And three in the afternoon. Which means that there's, there's no way that the kindergarten kids are getting everything the full-day kids are getting, which is what you always promised.
No, we always, we said they would have access to the curriculum that the half-day previously had. So, that's what they had.
Before this year, what was always stated was, half-day kindergarten got the same exact education as full-day kindergarten. Full-day just got more of it.
Right.
That was what was always stated.
And that's the same thing.
So now what's happening is, half-day kindergarten's gonna get three with, along with the full-day.
Right.
In the afternoon, they'll get the four.
Right.
And then they'll switch. But what can't happen and what's, what's not gonna happen is, I mean, the half-day kindergarten, they're definitely gonna miss stuff.
So, I think I understand what you're saying. So in January, when they're having their specials in the morning, and then they leave, they're missing some chunk that wasn't there in the afternoon.
Because the education still moves forward.
Right, but they're not there in the afternoon.
But I...
So, previously, if you were a half-day kindergarten, you would have, you would have had your specials in the morning. You had three specials in the morning. And then when you flipped to an afternoon class, you would have your specials in the afternoon. Those were different specials, they weren't the same specials. So you, you always had a half a year of special. And that's exactly what they're getting this, this time around, they're getting a half a year of special.
But what, I think though, the way that I understood the kindergarten was, now that they're integrated classrooms, I mean, it's half-day and full-day together, that the only thing the full-day kids are getting beyond the half-day kids is enrichment, a little more of what they've already gotten. So, when they're off for, how long is a special, forty minutes?
Yes, forty minutes.
So when they're in the morning, the whole class is forty minutes at a special. That's taking out of non-special learning, curriculum learning, that the half-day kids can't get that in the afternoon because they're not there.
Right.
So, the full-day kids will be getting it.
Right.
Obviously, but, that, so that's time away from learning that forty minutes of a special in the morning from the half-day kids, that they're not gonna make up. Because you can't enrich something that isn't new. I mean, enrichment is where concept or practice is already learned. So the half, the full-day kids are now gonna learn something they, you know, build on what they learned two days ago with the morning kids? Or they're gonna get something new? I, I just think, I mean, realistically as a teacher, I'd use that as time to give them something more because forty minutes is a lot of time.
Right. So, the kindergarten kids, their morning schedule, all of them are together, they're gonna follow the exact same schedule. When the kindergarten kids go home, the afternoon, the, the kids that stay for, for a full day will have an afternoon schedule and they will, that will include a special. Those specials that are scheduled currently in the afternoon will flip in January and they will come to the morning. So, the curriculum that's being taught in the afternoon right now in the fall will be part of centers. And this was something we'd, they had already arranged and it was already a part of the, what they looked at, making sure they were offering the same time with kids, same specials with kids. Are, will be embedded into the centers. And those curriculum teachers were going to do something to either, you know, one day out of the cycle or something, spend some time just making sure that the teachers knew what the center was about and so forth so that they could expound upon it if they needed to. So they'll have exposure to that curriculum. And then the same thing will happen when they flip and the...
Yeah, I get how it works in the fall, it's in the, so what I'm seeing is, and, and I think it's really just because they're in there together, that in the fall, it's great, everyone's following the same schedule, the kids get the, some specials in the afternoon. So they're not, it's not, you know, not that specials aren't learning, but it's not curriculum learning time. It's enrichment in the specials. When we flip it, because everyone's specials are in the morning, that's taken away from the curriculum learning.
No, you mean...
And that's in the morning, am I telling you something?
No, okay, our, okay, this is, this is what I thought you were saying, is that
in a six-day cycle, you have seven specials.
Three of them would be scheduled during morning time, four of them would be scheduled during afternoon time. So everybody would go in the morning and the kids who stay for the afternoon would get the additional ones.
Right.
Then in January, you'll flip, so the four that were in the afternoon will be in the morning, the three that were in the morning will be in the afternoon, so...
We don't flip the kids anymore, we just flip the...
We're flipping specials.
But is that your understanding of what we're discussing tonight or what was discussed previously?
That's, that's my understanding of what Michael is saying we are doing so that...
As of tonight? Or at, or, or was, is that your understanding? Because I did not understand that. I understand that for tonight's discussion, but I did not, now that I'm hearing it, understand that for the discussion when we voted on it. And that could be my misunderstanding.
It had, it had to be that way. Yeah, I mean, if, if we didn't do it that way, we would have lost some curriculum time.
That it was going, we were going to have a 12:00 PM dismissal. It was to ease the transition between lunch and the half-days going home. But also to make it easier for the half-day kids to have a full
complement of, of specials.
And I am quoting verbatim from the website at the time, a letter that was on about the, um, choosing between half-day and full-day, that says, "We envision the afternoon as a time for lunch, rest time, additional outdoor time, and free choice."
Right, that's my understanding.
And that's, that's what I voted on, when I voted for a 12 o'clock dismissal.
So we're saying that we should have all seven specials for all the kindergartners?
I don't necessarily believe that, I don't know if there's a fix right now to fix this. I think there was a miscommunication, for lack of a better word, about how... Yes, and maybe I didn't delve into it enough to actually understand what I was voting on. But I feel like I, um, I voted for the half-day kids to have essentially exposure to the same curriculum that the, um, full-day kids were getting. But that the full-day kids, obviously by being there full-day, were going to get a deeper, um...
Experience.
Give me another word, thank you. A deep, I need the rain. Come with me everywhere. Um, a deeper experience. But, but essentially, down to its core, the, the full-day and the half-day were, were getting the same curriculum. And, and right now, it, they're not.
Again, I, I think they, they are getting the same curriculum by fact of time, they, they can't have the same time with it. But they are gonna get the same curriculum.
But not at the same, no, they're not at the same time.
They're not, not at the same time.
So, over the course of the school year, but that, the details of what we're discussing tonight is not what I understood and that's why I asked more, I didn't mean to step on you, but I did ask you that question because I need to understand if you're assuming that we're basing this off of today's discussion or what we voted on, and what we voted on is what you read. And you not haven't talked.
And logistically, I understand how you can't do it.
We just need to articulate it better for the future people making...
But I think that that's not what, it's not what we were expecting.
I, I think...
I think everyone had in their head that after lunch, they come, they rest, have a little more outdoor time and maybe the centers are set up again and they can do that stuff, sort of...
Right, but it wasn't a specific curriculum, right.
Expectations were definitely set in a, in a, in the family's minds, a, a certain way. And, and the feeling that you either choose full-day or, or you're just gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna get what you pay for, basically.
And I, and I sort of feel like, you know, as Sal said, that these are the same people that we spun this on that, yep, you signed up for your separate half-day class, but sorry, that's not an option. Yep, you signed up for your class to have, your kids have the exact same thing in the afternoon, but sorry, that's changing too. And, and it just, and I know it's a small group, but it's still an important group of kids in our community that, and families that we can't just dismiss. And I think it's too many times that we've done this to the same people.
Should we reach out to them?
No, I think we should fix the...
Well, I mean, again, I reached out to everybody who wrote to me and they were ecstatic that we made the changes. And so, you know, I don't know that there is an issue with, with remaining, um, so, I mean...
So you've already reached out.
So the change was to promise that there would be a flip-flop mid-year?
Absolutely, yeah.
So that was what changed?
Right, right.
But what, what then not? It's great that you reached out, it's great that it's gonna flip-flop, but what's gonna happen is, you know, pick a special, you know, even if it's just art, all right? So, the kids go through and they've got art projects. So the younger kids come, you know, the half-day kids come in and there's art projects hanging up all over the place that they didn't do. All right, and the teacher says, that's okay, you're gonna do that project in January. No, they're not. They're gonna do whatever that project is in January, what it relates to. And sometimes they try to relate it to a book that they read, or sometimes it goes to something else. They're not doing that.
So that's, that's why there's going to be that connection to the centers in the classroom. And I've stressed that.
In the morning?
No, in the morning.
In the morning.
So, because there's, there's always a, there's always a, a free time block, a center time block. Those specials have to make sure that what they do in the afternoon is connected to the centers so that the morning kids can have that exposure for, for lots of different reasons. But most importantly, because when they do the flip, they need to ha, you know, be, be ready to, to go into those classes and they need to have exposure to that curriculum.
Well, I'm not sure what the, the center is, I mean, I'm sure it's a table or something, but, again, art. So you're saying that, you know, the night before they did art was based on some book they read. So they come in and now it's free time, and so these kids don't have free time, they're doing the center.
It's not assigned, but it's an option for them to do it. Right.
They have to pick one usually, I used to volunteer all the time.
Yeah.
Free time isn't really, really free.
Right, it's not free time.
If you have to pick this one for two days, you, this is your first choice.
But in order for them to actually do the, the assignment that was forty minutes the night before, I mean, if this is that center, that's a rotating center where you, you only get ten minutes.
Well, I think we have to be practical and we have to try to do it. I think you did all the mitigating factors for that. I think you reached out, I think you flip-flopped, and I think you have center control for missing. I think that's what, that's, I think, that's good. I think we all agree that we all thought it was something else and that's unfortunate, but it is...
Well, it's a little more than unfortunate, but...
It is, it's un...
It's disappointing.
It's disappointing, that's a better word.
For the families that are impacted.
And, and, and that's our fault and we have to, we should ask more questions and we should, should...
I, I don't understand why, why, I don't understand why you think that's our fault. I voted based on the information that I had and that it was given, and so did you, and so did all the rest of us. So I don't know what more we could have done.
And we had somebody sitting there that's in charge of all that, that had done a lot of research and they said how it worked, and they guaranteed us that these kids would get their specials. Half-day kindergarten is exactly the same as full-day kindergarten, it's just more of the same. And that's not what they're getting.
That is true, but we are where we are, so what can we do to move forward, I think?
So do we keep, do we keep putting that information and then not following through?
So, because again, like, but you said, so we keep doing this to them?
I, I just wanna be clear. The, the, the talk that all the principals gave, which was identical in all three buildings, was exactly what actually got scheduled. So, last spring, they knew exactly the schedule, they gave them a mock schedule, all the parents knew.
So the information that we got...
So we did not mislead anybody.
But the information that we got was not what the principals gave us?
I think, I think it was. I think the difference is that, and I'll, I'll take ownership of this, we, we work in this every day. You know, so, there are things that we may not say because we make the assumption
That we know.
That everybody else knows. I don't, I don't know of anybody, and I'll take this as, as a, as a former principal of an elementary school too. I do, I would, I would just naturally assume that people understand that if you're in a half-day program, you're going to get half of something that other people are gonna get. And, and this is the half, we're, we're, we're trying very hard to make sure that the core is there, but on the specials, it's, it's half. Because we just don't have the time to do it and to do the justice to the core, which is really, really where we wanna spend the time to make sure that it's as close to the same as possible and where I think we're making the most change, you know, difference for the long run for kids.
All right, so we're, we're in a six-day cycle, right? So why couldn't they do a six-day cycle of, of specials? And then we're only dealing with one that is, gets thrown, then just rotate them?
Um, I think that primarily now, it's, it's about staffing. I don't know that we have all the staffing available to do that amount of specials every day. Because essentially, it's, it's three specials in the morning times each of the number of, of, um, kindergartens in each building.
Because if we give them all seven specials in the morning, you're adding a lot of special blocks.
And taking core curriculum out.
Well, I'm not sure that would be good.
I know.
Right, well, that's the other part, it's, it's the, the, the alternative is to, to remove core curriculum, which is really...
Are they getting, so they're getting these, they're getting their specials every single day?
They're, they're getting...
Yeah, one or two, it depends on the day.
Yeah, it does, it, it depends on the schedule, um, but...
So, and they can't rotate? I mean, I'm, I'm not, I guess I'm not understanding how the rotation happens because if you haven't, like, instead of having the one in the morning and the one in the afternoon, have them, you know, if, if, if time is the issue, have one on Monday or A-Day, the next one on B-Day, the next one on C-Day...
What do you do about the third grade class that had the teacher scheduled where you're now starting to stick in a kindergarten class?
It's, it's a complex, scheduling is very complex, it's not, it's, it's easy, you know, it's, it's a long, involved process. But, most importantly, our, our parents, again, were, were well-informed and in fact, were informed of what is less than what they're getting now. I mean, they explained it the way they actually schedule it and open school up with. So, they feel the parents, you know, knew that last year, we, this, this conversation probably should have happened last spring. So they were surprised by, by the one or two parents that came in. And actually, what sparked it was an error in somebody's schedule where it came home printed that they were getting a double of something and that sparked the conversation, um, in one of the schools. So, right now, all of our half-day kindergarteners are getting exactly what in prior years half-day kindergarteners would have been getting. Except in those rare cases where we had, uh, half-day was the only offering in that building.
But I think we should recognize that we didn't understand it, we didn't know what we were voting on exactly. We thought we were voting on something else.
I think we knew what we were, but we were presented with something that we thought was, was there.
Specials that was the same for everyone, that was the expectation
Right.
of the parents and of the members here, and it isn't really...
Right. And I think we take away from it that we need to make clear that we thought we were voting on this.
Yes.
That I voted on that. That, you know, I, and that another big lesson is, we can't, and this is across the board for everyone, we can't assume that anyone knows anything.
Quite frankly, I've.
And not, and not just.
Reluctantly voted for that because it was a rider on what I was supporting, and not because I was supporting taking half-day kindergarteners and giving them seven specials every six-day cycle because I, if I were a kindergarten parent at this point, I don't think that I would want my kid to spend half of a half-day doing specials instead of being prepared for first day in terms of.
Oh, I agree. I, I, I don't disagree with the plan, but I disagree with how it was presented, and how we, the information that we perceived it to be is not what it actually is, I think. And that's what.
Because I agree with you, Maureen. I think the curriculum is, is what we have to.
And I was, like I said, I was reluctant about that aspect of it, so.
Well, and I think most of us here can agree, and I know, I am a big believer in full-day kindergarten. I'm, I'm all rah-rah for it. But, you know, feeling like we're representing a group of people who, who think that they know their children better than I do. And they deserve to choose, if they have that option given to them, to choose what they think is best for their child, and, and it was explained to them that the afternoon, again, and I'm beating a dead horse, sorry, but the afternoon was not going to, was going to just be more of the same. And, and, and my final word on this, I guess, is, is that these, these families, at this point, just deserve, deserve better. They've been treated poorly. They, um, in the, you know, the library conversations that I have feel isolated. They feel that they're not allowed to know what other, what other kids in the classrooms are also half-day, because it's, it's a push to get everybody to choose full day.
Kindergarten, I mean, like, I remember, we were in kindergarten, we had a little directory that you had assigned, and yes, my kid could be in the directory. I mean, that could be a little.
Well, yes, I should, yeah.
You know, I mean, that.
This, one particular parent felt that it was kind of a secret as to, like, you don't want to impose on other people's personal informations, or, or ask, you know, are you half-day is kind of like asking a woman if she's pregnant or not. There's like a stigma against it, or, you know. Yeah. Thank you, Maureen.
I can certainly talk to the principal, it's just, no.
So, yeah.
Well, but that.
But, but it's, but it's like what Lynn was talking to, that, you know, that, that these kids do walk in and, and see something that the kids have worked on before. As opposed to when they were in their own dedicated class, you don't feel like you're isolated from, you know, seventy percent of the, of the class.
There's some, some, probably some misconceptions out there too, because last year when we were here, and we had a parent say she'd received a couple of letters encouraging her after she'd made her decision to go half-day, encouraging her to go full day. And I think that that kind of message grows legs, and it gets out there, and it's not a positive thing. And so I'm sure that's playing into some of what you're hearing too. My question is, just, you know, and then I'll stop on this. I, I would say, you know, if, if you've resolved what you can with the situation the way it is now, then you finish out the year, but we do, I'm assuming, have another opportunity to voice opinion and vote on this initiative at the end of this year, because I think all of this information has to inform, and then, you know, it's the litmus test to see how it went.
Right. During, during the budget, I want to be clear, during the budget process, because we'd have to plan.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, and you'll, you'll, you'll let us know.
Except we didn't have to plan to make the change.
But now we know what we have, you know, then we know that when that discussion comes up, that we're better informed to come from a place of making the next decision.
Yep, that's fine. But overall, this particular kindergarten issue, we're met here. It just, it just tastes bad.
But let's not forget the other side too, of the, there's so many families who really, really wanted.
Full day.
Full day. Couldn't get it. Because I heard nothing but positive. Really angry because they couldn't get their kids into full-day kindergarten, and we all have to say.
It was the same number as our.
So we can't make everyone happy, so let's.
In stone. I'm just, whether the numbers are the same or not, my point is that there is a whole population of people who are equally as happy about the change. That's all I'm saying.
That's fine.
And their voices just.
Well, they're happy.
Okay, that's life.
No one's gonna say, oh, I really wanted this, let me talk more about it.
Okay, moving on. Are we, are you done?
So, well, essentially I am. The, the other things that we're talking about are in the, in the agenda itself. I do want to point out, we, we are still looking for our Coordinator of Health and Wellness, and so that, some of the initiatives that we have, that were on her plate prior are, are being pulled together by a number of different people, but we're, we're working on those. We're working, do you have a question?
No.
Oh, we are working on school security. There, there, there's a new law as of July one, and so we are taking a look at our practices, as I've been talking about, and we're continuing to do that. We are probably going to bring before you, either at our next meeting or first meeting in October, some of the recommendations that we're thinking about doing that involve some of the changes that we're suggesting or will be suggesting. And that's all my.
Can I ask you a question? On the GS, on the GSA, oh, you know I'm gonna ask about GSA, but for the what's the role that's been vacated, the health curriculum?
Our Coordinator for Health and Wellness, yeah.
So I, I received a call today and a couple of emails. The GSA now has forty-five students in its club.
Yeah.
Which is great. They're the most inclusive group of kids in the high school. But they asked me, and I don't know where to direct them, on how to get in front of someone, but now that this person isn't there, is this.
Contact me, or contact Eric.
Great, so have them contact you?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then, moving on to subcommittee reports. Anne, thank you for waiting so patiently. Kellya, you're up.
Okay. So Neshova Susan had a great summer and are excited to get back to school. Before school started, the National Honor Society and student ambassadors were in a freshman boot camp to introduce new students to Neshova and to meet students from other schools. Activities included a scavenger hunt, field activities, and locker combination drills. The Everclassmen also helped Shrewsbury crush around on their first day. For fall sports, they have started, and we have over four hundred student athletes this fall participating in our teams. The field hockey team is off to a three-and-oh start. They host Shrewsbury on Monday night at six P.M. and at seven fifteen P.M. The boys and girls cross-country teams opened their season with wins against North Middlesex yesterday. Both boys and girls soccer teams played their first games yesterday. Both teams tied Westboro and head to Shrewsbury tomorrow night. A golf team has played three matches against mid-watch A opponents, and improving each day. The volleyball team lost their first game of the season to a strong Washington team, but was hosting Shrewsbury at home this afternoon. The football team travels to Westboro on Saturday for a two P.M. kickoff to open their season. On August twenty-third, five thousand dollars was raised for Michelle Farnsworth, a Neshova student with cancer. The fundraiser was a swimming event which boasted over one hundred participants to support Michelle, who has been a competitive swimmer. Also, the Allison Murphy Five K will be held on September twentieth. We are also looking forward to the back-to-school dance, which will be held on this Friday to support the senior class. Thank you.
Actually, thank you, Ellen. Is there any way for you to get access to, like, other clubs? I mean, you've got a whole school with a bunch of different clubs, and all we hear about is sports and drama.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, this.
Don't cut them off.
Well, no, I just, I went to hear about, you know, DECA, or, you know, what are they, you know, what's anyone else doing? You know, GSA you brought up, I mean, but this, I don't know if you have a knitting club or anything, I mean, but. I mean, do they exist? I mean, what are they doing?
Yeah, we have lots of clubs. As of right now, things are just getting started, so most clubs are, like, having their first meetings. I'm involved in a bunch of them. I'm not involved in some of them too. I can, I like ask some of my friends, like, what's going on, while they're captains of field hockey team and stuff. I can, like, definitely try and ask more people. It's not like I, like, I look on the business show on Twitter, I find that they have, like, DECA announcements and announcements about different, like, things are happening. I can definitely ask more people. It's kind of hard, like, I'm not in all those.
You know what, though, don't go crazy. Maybe what, maybe is there, is there, I know there's advisors for each of the clubs, but there must be someone, I don't know if it's Dr. Graham, who is kind of responsible for all the clubs, and maybe you talk with him to say, can you talk to the rest of the club advisors and ask them to filter through him or through someone in the office so that you're not out spending half your day every week gathering that information up? But that would be really great.
Yeah, definitely.
And there, there won't always be something, but like, when DECA goes to a competition, or.
Right.
You know.
Debate club, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
And I heard there was one, I just.
Stock market club, we have a gift club, we have tons of cool stuff.
Definitely.
Thank you.
There really is.
There is.
Yeah, it really is.
You should be the advisor.
I hear they need a coach.
Thanks, Paula.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nexus facilities and finance, Maureen?
Oh, we signed warrants all summer, and we had our first short meeting before this meeting to just do the warrants, and we haven't had any other big business to discuss yet.
So if you have facilities, does the, do capital projects go through you, like the roof and all that stuff, or does that go through space studies?
Comes through facilities. Those come through.
Since they brought the roof, how much of the roof was being replaced?
It's just that section there over the admin, or up to the admin section of the guidance back, essentially the old auditorium in a corner of the kitchen and the cafeteria room. The flat, the stone bell roof.
Also been working right on the.
Yeah, there's a little section that's also a flat part, but a foyer. Yeah, essentially with gym and the auditorium join, the building.
Yeah, and then the in-front, the front part of the gym too, even up there.
Yeah, that's another piece of a flat roof, yeah. Anything that's black in that section.
Personnel, subcommittee, there'll be an executive session to talk about unit seat counter later this evening. And as I said, we need to plan a meeting, actually, also, to talk about other. NRHS Space Study, Maureen?
We met once.
Twice.
Twice this summer, and we have another meeting next.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
The eighteenth. Oh, right.
On the head of my. No, yeah, next Tuesday.
Next day?
Next Wednesday. Right. We've, we've done a lot.
Fifteenth would be Thursday.
Thursday, yeah.
Yeah, seventeenth is Wednesday.
Why aren't we meeting right now?
It is the eighteenth.
Thank you.
I didn't check the date.
We, we've, we've done a lot of kind of looking at some things and trying to organize ourselves, and at this point, I'm really hopeful that we're, we're on a good path to uncovering the data that we need in order to make a curriculum for that decision. But we don't have that right now, and there shouldn't be any drama or assumptions made, just to be fair to the people that are on the committee.
I think that's it for reports for tonight.
I just, we just learned on ESBC, they're scheduling a meeting on the twenty-second.
Okay.
And, actually, I have another question in the morning, facilities. Would they be in charge of warranties? Who's, who controls the warranties?
That's within the department.
Within, facilities departments, would those filter through? Because I thought I saw on ESBC that there was an issue with warranties.
Right, but that's a building issue. It's a building committee issue that we're trying to raise, that there are things that have gone out of warranty, and we think that during the whole period of the building, which is less than two years now, they haven't worked well.
Were they, were they ever addressed during that period, so that they weren't working?
Yes.
The officials still found out about it?
Yeah, well, that's the question.
Okay, on to new business. We were woefully behind schedule, now we're miraculously caught up. We have the discussion of surveys. A variety of surveys, school improvement surveys, district improvement surveys, school building specific surveys. Who wants to lead this little discussion?
What's the purpose?
So, one of the things that was on our last agenda, we talked about, you know, the survey data and you know, the, the research on, on what you need for feedback is to be a valuable piece of feedback. So, I think we looked, the, the studies say you need fifty percent respondents to make it valuable, which I think is higher than what I knew of it to be years ago, but anyway. And, and none of our schools have been reaching that for a number of years. So, I think one of the questions that we need to ask ourselves is, how do we attract more respondents to the school-based surveys so that we can make sure that the information the schools are getting, they can act on with some sense of authority, that, you know, it's really what parents want? Or it's really, you know, telling them what they think they're asking in the first place. The other piece of, piece around this that I would put out on the table is, I do think that we've only had about, we've had four consistent questions for the last approximately three years for the district, and mostly around communication and the superintendent for the purposes of my evaluation. But the question I would put to this group is, do you want to have a district survey? We had one about two years ago that we had a committee work on, and we put out. We should probably revisit that one and just see if that's a document that we want to replicate. But that would get at the district-related events, issues, questions that we might have. The school-based surveys really are the work of the school councils. It's one of the most important jobs they have, and I would hate to take that away, because I think anytime you have a committee, you want to have real work. You don't want to have something that's sort of handed to you, and, because then it loses purpose for why you exist as a committee. So, I think that the, but there's definitely room for, you know, having our, our district survey based on our recruitment plan, based on the questions that you raise, you know, our kindergarten implementation, you know, just getting feedback in general. I think it's a good process. The questions always exist, you know, how often, how long? You know, I think this, this body, maybe policy could take it on, and we can develop it, you know, in time, based on the document we have. I think that would be a good, good activity.
So, I'm gonna jump in because this is near and dear to me. So I have some questions. First of all, I think the number of survey, surveys that people are asked to fill out is, we have to, like, I would like to know, so there may be a district survey, then there's one for the school, and then depending upon whether or not your kids are other schools. But there's a lot of different surveys, so that's kind of like, so part of the discussion last time, or last year, was how many surveys do we have, when do we have them? And then, after we answer that question, do we have the right number? Are we asking the right groups of people? Then the issue is, I do believe, and, and unless somebody has data that shows me it's not right, that our surveys across the district should have a chunk of it that's similar in every single survey. That gets to the district-wide stuff, but it also gets to the curriculum, like, it gets to a lot of things. I don't think you should take away a chunk of it that belongs to the school and the school councils. That's fine, because what goes on in Sawyer School isn't going to be the same that's going on in Luther Burbank. But I do believe that for the purposes of valuable data that is actionable, if we had a chunk of that survey that was based on things that are uniform, we keep talking about parity, let's prove it out, show us, you know, show us, community, what you think about these particular issues. let's prove it out, show us, you know, show us community, what you think about these particular issues that reside in all of our schools, then not only can you look at that from a school-based perspective, but you can see where you have outliers and you can start to trend it. And that's much more valuable to you as the head of the organization. The other question, so that's two.
So wait, a list, so we need a list of the.
We just needed to find what, what, what surveys are we sending? How many?
Yeah, I got that.
What if?
And.
What if we had it so that every family knew at the end of every year, they had one survey to do? And it was put out by the building that their kid attends, but maybe a little teeny section of it is district-wide stuff. And then, because I think it's confusing. I don't know if I filled out all the surveys or not.
That's my, that's my point.
Is I don't know how many surveys there are. And I, if I've done one, am I, do I need to do another one?
That, that's my point.
So if there was one survey a year and then just a few questions, we maybe as the school committee, take care of those district-wide questions and then all the rest of the questions are up to the school.
Or the calendar committee or others.
And I really think that the whole, so the third point which feeds into this is we need to be really professional about what we're asking people. We need to be really specific about what we want to know. I see some of the surveys and some of the questions are so out in left field. They lead people. And I know that people are doing what they think is the right thing to do. They're not trying to be, they're not trying to be cloak and dagger. I get that. But there needs to be more structure around the way the surveys are built. And yes, we talked about training.
That's an action.
I think that, yes, and I went in and changed it a little bit because I don't know that it's just about training. I still believe that there should be, and Michael, I know you're going to say, you look at them. I want to see them. I want to see what we're asking people because I do not want to make a decision based on data that's given to me without me understanding what the question was and how it was presented after the fact. And there's no way to influence it because if that happens, nine times out of ten, I'm going to be very skeptical about what was the genesis of the question? What were we trying to get to? Does that make sense? And I know you're going to say, oh, don't take it out of their hands. But I, I'm not saying I want to build your surveys for you. But I think we need to be respectful of what we are asking of people, why we're asking it, how we're asking it, and what we intend to do with the data.
So, but, so we had some open action items from last year that were on that list. Like one was getting training for the principals so they could work with the teens within their schools to get it. Was that, is that something in the works?
Still open. It's in the works, yes.
Okay. And the goal was to have principals do that job. So, um, do we want to talk about?
Principals are educators.
No, I'm not disagreeing with you.
Right, no, principals are educators. So who's.
Are we asking that, are we asking that we want, are we asking as a forum, do we want to review all the surveys? Or do we want our eyes on the surveys? Are we going to, is that a question to the group?
I would like to see them.
Do you want to see everything or do you just want to see the, the, the district section of the surveys? Because that's really where our action.
District section, absolutely. We should all have some influence over, uh, as to why we're asking what we're asking and then how it's being presented.
To?
The person filling out the survey. I, I spent time on the Sawyer School, School Council and worked with Joel on his surveys. And he's done great stuff with his surveys. I can't go to your town or your town and say, I want influence over here. Just know that if, uh, if data is brought to the school committee and it's data based on a survey, I need to see the questions.
Right, but there might be, they might want to.
You always see the questions.
Right, so they want to.
But it's after the fact.
Maybe we want to help them build their own synergies as well. So if Joel's surveys are yielding more results or asking more non-leading questions to get actionable things to happen, maybe the other school committees would be more than hap, or school councils would be more than happy to look. So maybe we could help them with synergies.
Well, that came up last year, but that's not up to me or you.
Right, but.
That's not at our.
So we're discussing.
If I remember correctly, I think it was across the, across the board. No one got significantly in.
No, no one's getting more significant.
Response, right. And we talked about, there was another open item on the list from last year. About should we at open house and at parent teacher conferences set up a bank of computers and say, take your survey now because everyone's walking in and out. And I think it's, if, I don't know if we have any surveys that go out right now, but I think if we had a goal towards parent teacher conferences in March, we could get our ducks in a row and maybe talk to those other people to get, you know, if everything is available at that time, it might be, it might not be one survey, it might be three this year, but at least they could be like, these are the three surveys out there. You know what I mean?
And from a district perspective, we should at least have consistency across them.
Definitely, definitely. Yeah. No, district surveys are district.
No, I mean, if, no, within the context of the suggestion that we don't have a separate district survey, that there's a piece of the district survey in those other surveys.
Right, no, I, yeah, no.
So by, the next time we talk about this, do you think you could get people to give you a list of all the surveys that are going out on a yearly basis?
Uh, we, we, I don't have a list of all the surveys because they're done differently in each building. So what I do have is a list of the questions. I had Alita compile all the questions. So we, we know what all the questions are that are going out on the survey. There's over three hundred questions.
So we have three hundred questions, but how many ser, because let's, let's roll it up.
Yeah, I'll have, I'll have to ask that question because what, you know, some of the feedback was people were getting
one long survey. They didn't want one long survey. So some schools have broken it down into four smaller surveys.
Data, so the list of yearly.
What is that going to tell us? I'm just curious.
It would tell me how many times people are taking surveys and is it a big discrepancy or not and do we care?
Big surveys or short surveys? I mean.
Doesn't matter.
I, I do think it matters because I, I would, I don't want to take as a parent, five long surveys. I may take five short surveys.
Wait, so if we could have a little matrix of school.
I'm not taking a school survey.
Survey and just say, is it a long or medium or short? And what, one, one, and what it covers.
Yeah.
Because we're just talking right now. Do we want?
We're not really, you know what? The, the thing is, this is, this has to be an initiative. This should be a, I mean, I'm not trying to put any work on anyone's plate, but this can't be like a group think thing. It's got to be, you know, a group of people get together and make some decisions, come to you with recommendations, but.
With some data.
That's why I'm outlining these things.
Can we assign this to the policy, subcommittee?
Oh, look at you. Look at you.
I love that idea.
You've assigned it to policy. It's going to get done.
I do think though, the full committee should direct some of the thinking around it. You know, you know, what is your goal as a school committee in terms of information that you're trying to collect? And then, then the policy committee can discuss some ideas about how to achieve that.
But you can't move forward until you know what you have. She's asking.
We get that, you know, how many surveys question, you know, answered. I just.
Well, it doesn't even just how many, you just need to know what it is. What is the list of surveys that you get?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Not what percentage.
Well, that's why that's the first thing on the list, right? How many surveys?
Yeah.
I think part of the question has to be, how valuable are the surveys? Even if, even if the surveys are really well-written and we spend tons of time thinking about the questions, the question is, how many people and who are those people that are actually responding? And are the people that are responding, is that representative of our entire school communities?
That's why we got to get our arms around this because it's all over the place.
Because in my opinion, the people who are answering the surveys, it's probably the ones that have.
Allow opinion.
Right.
So, so we're not hearing from everybody when we're taking these surveys. So then how valuable are the surveys?
Oh, but, but are you saying anytime you take a survey, you only heard from, you know, you, but you know what? You give everybody the option and if they decide not to, I think right now the confusion is, well, I already filled it out. Did I fill that? I filled, I filled something out, so I'm not going to do it.
Right. But like in the sections that we always have for free response.
Yeah.
Those, I mean. I think it's human nature. They're negative because that's who's speaking up. I mean, they're not always negative.
Right.
But I think if we give them that option in March, we're going to hopefully, I think our goal should be to raise our response numbers by ten percent if we can and, and to have our arms around, at least if we don't have perfect surveys or lessen the number of surveys, but at a minimum, make sure our surveys are all available in March with the computers there and Will signs and people all shake hands at the door, take your survey. And maybe we'll get our numbers up.
Nobody's coming to the high school in March though.
Oh, there's no parent teacher. Oh, then I have no idea because I'm a middle schooler.
I would chunk it out, but we can, I mean, I don't know.
I don't mean that's the goal, but we, we should have goals.
It's a good goal. The percentage increase is a great goal. But again, you can't do anything. Like, I mean, the questions are great, but they don't mean anything because you don't know what we have.
Yeah.
You know, and until that's all gathered, it's, it's meaningless, unfortunately.
Yeah.
So we're stuck until you do your part.
And then we'll give it to policy.
Don't you keep it out?
There you go.
Anything else about, uh, surveys? Anyone burning to say? That's a goal. I'm sorry? So surveys are a goal? Three to five, you a goal?
Um, three to five.
Well, I think a survey is an action item around people's sensibilities about what we're doing.
So, so the goal is communication and that's an initiative?
That's.
So you have to call it an initiative? Um, and we have a next step or two.
Yeah.
For that. You're collecting the information about what surveys are currently being circulated.
Correct.
Okay. Excellent. Can you get samples somewhere, Michael?
Yeah, we can get.
Just so.
We've got the copies of the surveys.
We can see what the district ones specifically.
They were in the packet last year. They're still on the website.
Yeah.
Are you guys on some? But it was just, was it just one year?
Is that all the surveys that are released through the entire district?
That are related to the school councils. I, I would have to ask, you know, it's all about the question you ask. So, you know, I asked about school council surveys. So if they're, you know, I have to say.
It's just a way to, if we want to hear what people have to say, we need to be specific and not confuse it. That's all.
Right.
It's like, what are all the surveys that are?
Do you just want it from one year or do you want past years?
Let's stick with one year because I don't think it's data we collect.
It's probably indicative of the rest of.
Is there more than this?
Well, it will be informative for the phone.
Well, there's, there are other types of surveys. There are, uh, you know, use risk to behavior. That's a student survey.
Yeah, not students.
The only other two I can think of is the NEAS one, the top of the website, and then the calendar.
Right, calendar.
Yes.
Who sent out the calendar one?
Uh, the calendar committee.
Calendar committee.
It would, I would think we would want to roll that in.
We wrapped it in the district one, right.
Why not?
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a district improvement plan. Yay.
Just be honor roll. I just, five minutes on the honor roll.
I missed that. Yes, I did. I'm sorry.
It's just a, uh, so we have the pa, parent forum, um, sparsely attended, but good feedback. Uh, and so, uh, some changes have been made. We're, we're still discussing those changes. Uh, and then, uh, Nancy's suggestion, I collected some data from, uh, existing, uh, schools that we compare ourselves to. And so that's in your packet. Uh, and so it's kind, it's kind of interesting. I think it's different from what I expected. Um, it's, most schools are much simpler than ours is, uh, and they just use letter grades. It's not weighted. As many, uh, this, like only one major one that's.
It's not weighted.
It's not weighted. Um, but there are different elements at the high school. Yeah. These were all high schools that we asked.
Oh, yeah, weighted, yeah.
So, uh, so that's info, you know, it's information for us to digest as well. But the recommendation that's currently there for us, and I would be doing a parent forum, I just have to schedule it, uh, is a weighted GPA based on the feedback of that parent forum. Uh, and, um, and some changes around, uh, an extra layer. Uh, we had two, we went to three. Um, and then allowing one C for, um, the, the last layer. So there's now highest honors, high honors and honors, and the honors level would, we would allow one C in then. Um, because again, it, it would, there are, there are, if we use the weighted model, there are kids that conceivably could earn a C, but other high grades, um, and, and, but not make high honors or honors, uh, high honors or highest honors, and this allows them to get an, an honor.
So we're thinking of keeping the three levels?
It's right there. As, as, as some of the changes that we've made, it's still a draft. It's still a working form. We'll do another parent forum. Um, I want to digest more of the, um, you know, what other high schools are doing. Uh, many of them are just strictly doing letter grades, uh, you know, based on what their letter grades are, which was sort of the original model that we were going with. Um, and, um, so they're all over the place. So I think we can agree with what our own is.
So as a principal, as a superintendent, and I'm not asking to put you on the spot, I'm asking you this because of your expertise. What do you think, what do you think an honor roll should represent?
I think it should repre, repre, represent the high academic achievement of the courses the student takes. So, you know, my preference would be, if I were just the one, we're bringing the magical on, would be letter grades and only As and Bs.
I'm with you.
I'm not. So basically, highest is straight As, high honors is As and Bs, and honors, one C.
Correct. And so current draft is, is under a weighted system.
So are we still going to use this as a punishment for, um, people that are not model students? So if you have straight As and you're not a model student, or somebody considers you're not a model student, you do not get honors.
I'm not sure how you mean punishment.
What do you mean?
There's, there's a.
Oh, for the middle school, you still, you would have to get, uh, the, the I or M. The inconsistently meets or meets.
Right. So which, which kind of is, it, it makes this mean nothing. I mean, basically, this is supposed to say, because it's so subjective whether you get an I or an M or whatever you get.
We're trying to make it less subj, uh, subjective and more objective, and that's part of the goal of our reporting system. So we're trying to move away from it being subjective.
I, I understand that, but you've still got that hanging over somebody's head if they've got straight As and somebody does not consider you a model student.
But there should be evidence about that.
Okay, so somebody could come back and say, why aren't I on this?
And the teacher has to be able to show the evidence and the principal has to confirm that that's why it is.
So you have, you have check and balance.
Yeah.
So they have, they do have a recourse. Because this means a lot to some people.
I, I know it does. Absolutely.
So, I mean, all right.
What were you?
Well, I, your thought? Well, my thought is that it's not, um, it's not recog, if, if we don't use a weighted GPA.
It doesn't recognize the honors.
It's not recognizing or applauding those who are pushing themselves.
I know.
So, and if we say, anybody who gets an A is on the honor roll, well then, why don't we say to those kids, well, if you're getting straight As and you're in all CP classes, why don't you try taking an accelerated class or two? And then maybe you won't get straight As anymore, but we're still going to applaud you because.
You're doing good work.
In fact, we want to bug it even a little harder and louder because you're doing even better work. Because you might be doing better by getting a B in an accelerated class than you were in getting an A in a, in a CP class. That's why I don't like the model without weighted. I think it discourages kids from pushing themselves.
I agree.
Um, and I could, I could go on for days and days and days about.
No, I, I need to hear it. I need to hear it.
Because you've got AP kids taking like CP biology because they don't think they're going to pass it or it's chemistry or whatever, because they want to keep that.
No, an AP kid's going to take an AP.
Well, at least like the AP kid who gets a, a B in AP bio is not going to get the same honor as a kid in CP bio that gets a B too, but the kid's working his butt off and it, because he's pushed himself to go to the next level when he could certainly be in an accelerated class and get an A and get highest honors.
Right.
That's why the GPA is.
Let me ask you guys a question. At the high school level, and I could be wrong because I come from my little piece of the world, is that really motivating kids? Is being on the honor roll really going to motivate kids to push themselves or not push themselves?
In, is that going to motivate them? No. However, at, after that it's been done, when there's a student who has pushed themselves and maybe they did get a C because they took three APs. We don't want to say to them, oh, you shouldn't have taken that because then you wouldn't have gotten a C.
It's deflating.
You shouldn't, yes.
It's deflating after the fact more than it's motivating to the fact.
I don't think there's any kids out there picking their courses based on the honor roll. But I do think there are lots of kids out there picking their courses based on, well, I'm going to get all As and Bs.
Oh, I know.
And no matter what, I'm going to get all As and Bs. And everybody's doing that. And so, not everybody, but a lot of kids are doing that. So.
But then, and I get where you're at, and I get the AP and the honors thing because I'm there, right? So I have a kid who's taking honors classes and if he gets a C in a class, yeah, he's going to be upset. If he doesn't make the honor roll, he's going to be upset, but I don't know.
It's not, it's not so much, as I said, motivating that kid. It's not, it's slapping him in the face for doing it.
But again, I just question if the honor roll is really what those kids need to motivate them. If you have, if you have a kid who's.
Why have it all that?
If you, let me finish my thought. If you have a kid who is motivated to be in honors classes and AP classes and push themselves. and I would say that most of the kids in those classes are self-motivated, then is them not being on the honor roll going to be as disturbing to them as being on the honor roll will be a positive push for the kid who's not in those? Am I making sense?
No, but I think if you have it weighted, they can both get it. So, absolutely, those kid, that kid who, you know, it's like, you know, I know kids that came to high school for the first time, they made honor roll, because the classes are, you know, leveled, and they're very successful in their classes. But then there's the kids who either self, maybe, not that they're not self-motivated, but taking higher level classes, if they care about the honor, it is a slap in the face to them to a kid who has a 3.9 but doesn't make honor roll, because he got a C in an AP class. You know what I mean?
Oh, I really, personally, I know what you mean.
Or, you know, a kid could have a 4.0 and get a C in an AP class.
Yeah.
But.
Well, not AP, but yeah.
And then the kid who's sitting next to them decided they were going to take.
Um, yeah, I'm talking GPA.
Yeah, the lowest level classes they could, and they got recognized, and they're working a lot harder, and they're not considered to be as good a student.
But I guess the question is, to Michael's point earlier, which was, we're kind of, not, you didn't say overthinking it. I'm kind of saying, we could overthink it, but you said, we're making, ours is a little more difficult, or I forget what the word was that you said, we're making it more complex. Maybe that was it. More complex. So, at what point do we, because I'm not saying, don't do any weighted, I'm like, but how, now we get into gray areas, and how far do you go, and, and you're adding like, you know, your interaction with the teachers in there, and it's like, where do you stop?
Do you think that the honors and GPA really need honor?
I think it's a badge of honor for anyone, especially in the paper.
I was just going to say, I think parents are a factor in this conversation, because I think parents do want their kids in honor roll. I mean, I've had, I've had, let's put it this way, I had more phone calls, less about who's on the honor roll, but whether or not the honor roll is printed in the paper.
Yeah, right.
I mean, that's, you know, that's the level of conversation, and I think that's legitimate. I think if parents see their kids having the honor, they want everybody to know it, and that's a nice thing to celebrate. Right. The, the, the question, the current proposal, essentially, and, and the conversation that I think Nancy and I agree is that we don't want, I don't want a model that allows kids to gain the system, number one. And number two is, I want our counselors and educators to be having the kinds of conversations that moves kids into those more challenging classes, and making sure that we are, we are essentially, I mean, you know, it's not about a permission or not, but, you know, we want kids to be in what's most challenging for them. And we should be making sure that kids know that the end game, which is, is for the majority of our kids, is college entrance, is the more rigorous courses you take, the more attractive picture you paint of yourself for colleges to look at you. And we've got to, we've got to get our kids to understand that, early, very early on, I think, probably earlier than their freshman year. I think they've got to get.
I think they need to know that.
They need to know that, you know, as part of the transition.
And I think it's more with parents.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that education, because it's a whole new, I mean, you just don't know that.
Right. It just opens more doors when you take more rigorous courses.
So is it just a misunderstanding of people not to, like, or we want, we want them to be challenged to the point of not getting an A? We want them challenged, all right? Because if they're not getting an A, then they're, they're being challenged. A is probably too easy, I'm not saying it's.
Maybe.
I'm not saying it's too easy, I'm just saying, but for some, you know.
It could be, yeah.
All right. So, is there, are we lacking something where they have to have that to feel good about what they're doing? I mean, is this?
That being one.
Well, is the honor roll, like, everybody, I have a son that, he has to be, he has to know what the end goal is. He's got to know what he's winning, because there's always got to be a win somewhere. And I hate to think that the honor roll's the win. Is, there's got to be another, you know, another direction for the win.
Well, I think everyone likes to be recognized.
I think the learning is the win.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I think the learning in a more challenging and rigorous course is even a bigger win overall, because there are multiple effects.
That's the topic to see as a kid.
But they quickly learn it when they start looking into schools and saying, you know what? Maybe I should have taken that higher level class, because that's the difference between me getting to this school and this school.
So maybe we should be having more college.
But that's what we're saying, earlier on, we need to get kids to understand this.
Maybe, maybe more college fairs or something coming in, to let them understand what's out there, what's available, and how to get there? Maybe we should introduce that sooner?
Yeah, but.
Because, I mean, I'd hate to think that having a name in the paper and an honor roll is the win. I mean, because when we get, you know, ninety out of a hundred kids in there, it's like, it's washed out. You know, if everyone's on the honor roll, nobody's on the honor roll. I mean, there's no harm.
I totally agree.
And that was part of why we started this whole discussion.
Which is, so we need to refocus them somehow.
Well, yes, but I don't think that the honor roll is the win. And I don't think, as we've said several times already tonight, that, that the honor roll is motivating kids. I don't think it is.
But this conversation's gone on for twenty minutes, I don't think we've talked about an education thing this long. I mean, this is about a name in the paper. Well, I mean, it, it's a, it's a hot topic. So, I wonder if we just need to, you know, re-look.
I think, you know, what makes everyone happy is that they're named in the paper, I can tell. I, I'm, my personal, I see what my kids are doing, I see what classes they're taking. I know what they're doing if they're named in the paper. Who cares? But if that makes some people feel good, I don't care if it's not on a roll.
Well, and it's a tough one too, because you, you always get into this discussion of, you know, kids who do sports, get the name in the paper, everybody, rah rah, sports, but we don't celebrate the academics, which is why they're really supposed to be there in the first place. So, honor roll is one way to celebrate the academics as opposed to, like, the athletes and stuff. But it's, sports is actually a lot easier to define.
Woo!
No, not to say. No, sports are not easier than academics. It is easier to say, to define who gets in the paper and who doesn't. You hit a home run, you get your name in the paper. You have that fantastic save, you get your name in the paper. You sat on the bench the whole time, you're probably not going to get your name in the paper, although you are part of the team, and the team won't get their name in the paper. You know, it, but, but then, but with the academics, it's like, oh, is it the As or is it, what kind of an A? And, you know, is, is it good enough to be really good overall? Or do you have to meet a certain level in every subsection, which is the discussion of whether or not to have a C and still be allowed an honor roll? Now, I would like to see consistency between the middle schools, whatever that is. Because they're not, they're not consistent.
I really feel like I would defer to you guys.
Because, for example, at Hale, you did not make the honor roll if you got, you're, you're, at least when my kids went through Hale, RAS classes or specials, whatever you want to call them, your grade in those impacted whether or not you got on the honor roll, same as math and science and everything else. So, I had, they, they had a glitch one trimester where a whole bunch of kids who'd been high honors the first trimester were nowhere to be seen second trimester, including my own kid who had gotten straight As, including in all his RASs. I called the school, I said, you know, he's not on the honor roll, and there are a whole bunch of other kids that are missing that. I can't believe they went from high honors to nothing. And they said, well, we can't just fix it, we'll have to go through and manually check, because you don't know if those kids may have gotten bad grades in one of their RASs and.
What's a RAS?
Special.
Special. Related arts and science.
I know, yeah. I was thinking.
We just keep changing it to keep us confused.
I think you guys are so smart. Oh, anyway.
So what, what do we have to make a decision on this?
No, this was just information.
Wow, actually, I mean, could this fall into one of our goals? Because, I mean, again, I hate to think that, that honor roll is the win. I'd like to, I mean, I'd like to see a refocus of, a show of accomplishment.
Well, then maybe a different goal of sort of better recognizing academic achievements.
I think we're defining, right, I think we're defining what academic achievement is.
Redefining academic achievement?
And maybe being more public about it, like we asked Talia to come and talk.
Inconsistent, because we're trying to fill schools out in the same place.
Yeah. I mean, I'd like to see, I mean, some of these kids are doing, I mean, on occasion, you had somebody come in talking about what they would go to Nicaragua or something, for a month, they'd win this.
Yep. The Bonozoli Award.
Yeah, and, and we were honored with, what, two years in a row?
Mm-hmm.
Or something, which is, which was huge. But, there's no, I mean, I don't know if those students knew the pathway to get there, if that was something that they were interested in.
I think if you look, there's a lot of recognition out there.
Yeah.
I think if you go on the website, there's, we're bragging about our kids for all sorts of different things. And I feel like, I kind of feel like it's there. I mean, obviously, the sports is, as it's there, but I also think those sports kids are the honor roll kids, or the kids who are in DECA, they're the kids who are in the plays, they're, you know, it's, I just, I just think the athletes often get a bad rap, just that it's only focused on the athletes. But these athletes.
Are they.
Are the very well-rounded, not, I mean, the kid on the football team is the lead in the play, is, you know, class president, is on, you know, is just very, we're very lucky to have a very diverse group of kids. And I feel like, I feel like I know a lot about it, and, you know, my kids aren't in plays, but they go to them, and, you know, it just.
Right.
I think for the most part, it's a good network of clearly diverse kids, and I feel like we do a pretty good job working on all different aspects of them.
Okay. We have to stick with improvement, right?
Just include.
Okay. We had originally talked last spring about perhaps tackling the goals one and two tonight, and goals three and four next week. Does that still sound reasonable?
Actually, I read, because I was having a hard time with it, I looked up strategic planning, and they have this really neat thing where they said that the core values, the mission statement and the core values, everything has to relate back to them. So I went and I read what you were doing, and I couldn't figure out, do we change our mission statement? Because you've got, the mission statement in Shova, "The district is to educate all the students to the fullest potential", but then you have this new one. And I got, "We believe education is shared responsibility among students, educators, feelings, and community." Do we change it?
No.
Because our mission statement isn't on this one, the other one. It just says, "Nishova now, a strategic plan for the 21st century."
It's on the bottom of that document, it should be. It has not changed.
Nope. So I couldn't find it.
Okay.
So, and that was fine, because they said that the mission statement needed to be, why, our purpose, why, yeah. So that's fine, we need to educate, which is fine. And then the next thing you go on to is.
The shared responsibility comment is that it's just the introduction to the core beliefs. The mission statement is still.
No, no, no.
I'm just reading from the district improvement plan, but I see.
Okay, yeah, you're going to hand us, you're going to hand us the mission statement. So, the next one is the values, and the supporting components, and it says, so as you were going through them, I'm not reading them. I guess my next question is, which one are we going by? Which one are you hitting on? This was last year's?
So that's last year's, that's what we're trying to, and right now, we're just talking about the improvement plan, though?
Well, from what they were saying was, you really can't, because you have to go through the values, because everything has to go, has to go back to that. So, when I do that and I read our first one, there's no, it's not measurable, the goal itself. I mean, the initiatives underneath are, to some extent?
Yep. And, and this is the struggle that we have with writing goals. Because the, the idea behind, you know, it would be tough to look at what the initiative is, excuse me, the, the goal, and to, to look at a measurement beyond what the initiative is. Because the goals, and they'll teach you in, in developing strategic planning, it has to be broad enough so that it can be, you know, over time. It can't be so specific that it's an action.
Well, what they said was, you need to have something that's actually measurable, that can have an end to it, and that you have to actually put steps in there, and the steps dictate, you know, the timeframe.
Yeah.
Which was great. But again, they all had to go back, and they all had to be measurable, measurable in some point. Again, I just thought I'd read it today, so I'm not that great at it. So, in the core values, what I was looking at too, it said, when you have, after the mission statement, when you go to the values, it says, "These are the characteristics we believe are important in how we do our work." And so I was reading, and you'll, the core values from this one? And I had a hard time with the first three, but the last three, which we took from you, when I worked, those I could measure. For those, I was like, okay, I get those. But the first three about achievement and growth of all students through high quality and coherent practices? Didn't know what it meant. And then, active environments in which students' diverse backgrounds, identities, strengths, and challenges are respected. And I, I guess I liked last year's better. But it, and from what they said is, you have to understand what the mission statement and the values are before you can even get into the goals.
So the first one, achievement and growth of all students through high quality and coherent practices, that's talking about the curriculum and making sure that it's rigorous. And they were challenging our kids. And then the second one, active environments in which students' diverse backgrounds, strengths, and challenges are respected. We were just talking about a very inclusive student body that our kids have access to, a wide variety of opportunities to show who they are, and be, be who they are, and be independent learners throughout their, their entire experience.
All right. So is this the time when we want to introduce some of the ideas that Kathy had in the email?
Certainly.
About, about finding ways to make the initiatives more measurable.
Mm-hmm.
And as long as we are doing that, I thought Kathy's email was brilliant, by the way. That, we, you know, we apply the.
Did you send it to us?
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to send it to Michael George.
Go get that.
I did.
I don't know where it's on.
I meant to do it to everyone. I'm not that good at Yahoo. I'm more of a Comcast girl.
But applying is also with the measurable, but the whole SMART goal thing with the specificity. I got it out. Measurable, attainable, the relevancy, and the time due. And so that's the only thing within each of these goals that I think we should, at the beginning at least, delineate out.
How we can measure it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I am sorry, I'll forward it to you when I get home. But all it did was take these things and say, this isn't measurable, what could we measure? And I just gave hypotheticals on, we could measure this, but they were hypotheticals.
Mm-hmm. Measured by, I mean, clearly, fine electronic available student expectations, I mean, we can measure that.
So, so what I had trouble with last year is, I, I said to myself, well, what did we have at the beginning of the year, and what do we have now?
Okay.
So if you could tell us by school that we don't have electronic available expectations in Luther Burbank for grade six math, and our goal is to get that.
Gotcha.
That's all. If we had data to say, where are we today, and which, that, if you have that data, it will help highlight your inefficiencies and where you could spend your effort for.
Or efficiencies.
Or, and your efficiency, it's always start with the strength.
Right.
And then you could just circle three and say, these are where I'm going to try, and increase this by X. That's all it's at.
Yes.
Because this is great, but how do we know you've done something different?
Right.
You know?
Yeah. So, maybe, maybe, if you've all seen that document, maybe when I see that, I can just merge the two and answer those questions? Would that be?
Well, I gave hypotheticals. They're not questions. She's giving examples.
I know, but I mean.
Okay, okay.
Where, where she thinks that, if you all think that those are places that they need those inputs, I'll input those and, and bring that document back.
So it wasn't, like, it was just my thought, so I don't think they're real, like, I literally made stuff up. I said, ninety percent of the words.
Right. Yeah, but I, I understand what you're trying to get at.
But applying, applying what she says, when they say it to every step here, I think is really, I think that's the only way to, to see if you, if you are achieving your goals or not.
These aren't steps.
I just sent it to you.
Like, one edge, you've got, describe what we expect students to know and be able. Like, one A, you've got, describe what we expect students to know and be able to do at each grade level, PK through twelve. Well, this is the same as last year's one A goal. So we must have something written now. There must be something.
Correct. We, we have them all written. What we don't have, we have them all written for ELA and MAP. We, we don't have them written for all content areas, and we don't have them electronically available. I mean, they're on a document that's online, but it's not in our new Atlas Rubicon that we talked about last year.
Yeah, so one of it was, how many are electronically available?
Exactly.
Hundred percent, eighty percent.
Right.
And then, how many do we wanna target for Atlas? And are we giving our teachers enough time to do that?
Mm-hmm.
Blah, blah, blah.
Right.
And, and that would be part of the steps, right? Because it says, all it says here for the priority actions is create an organization structured that promotes teacher leadership. What does that have to do with, um, students, PK through twelve?
You need the teachers to write the units of study that would be electronically available.
So basically, you're not promoting the teacher of leadership, you're asking teachers to put this on Atlas.
Right, but I mean, it, it takes leadership to facilitate the groups and to work together collaboratively to, but, I see.
It doesn't go towards a goal. I mean, you could assign somebody, which you must have already done so far.
We have groups of people working on them.
So you've got leaders.
Yeah.
So that's, that's done. But there's no steps in, in how, and there's no, like she says, timeline, there's nothing here to follow.
Right. Well, I mean, there is a timeline, but, see, that's the step that we needed to do first, is, is do that. I think if we more articu, more clearly articulated what we wanna see at the end, this year, which is probably what we need to do in terms of the SMART part, is break that down, because there isn't enough time to do a hundred percent of all events.
Absolutely.
Because this is a three-year plan.
Right, it's a five-year plan.
Which is fine, but you need to have, you need to have steps with, steps with, you know, reasonable steps.
Right, and I see that, right.
Then, then, there's nothing here.
Right. We have them internally, so I'll just put them on the document.
And then the second step would be, maybe at a halfway point, we come back and we review, what are our goals?
Definitely.
And what, where are we? And then if, if you know there's risks out there, or issues out there that you're not gonna get it, that's fine, as long as it's articulated and you reassess at the halfway to, you might not hit the original goal, but due to other factors, you know, you shouldn't be penalized if there's risks you can't mitigate that are out of our district control.
Right.
So I think we should set up a halfway point once, so I think we need to articulate what our baseline is, what our measurable factor would be, and then when we would have the baseline, and then when we would check.
As long as, and I think these are great ideas, and I like the idea of making things more measurable, as long as we don't lose sight of what's really important here, and that is to, um, not to constantly be measuring, 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 and not to, just like we don't wanna constantly be testing, testing, testing our kids, we have to remember that we also wanna be teaching them stuff.
Yes.
And making, having them be, you know, healthy kids. And, and the same thing, we wanna make sure that you're not constantly, you know, checking boxes to make sure that some goal, the next step is happening, but that the big picture is happening.
Right, right.
And I think that we have to depend on you to use your expertise to say, well, that's not reasonable to, to measure that, because that's gonna take me too much time, and that's gonna be too much time away from, you know, I don't know, professional development, or whatever it is that is taking you away from. I just don't wanna become so fixated on the minutia because we want to keep measuring, measuring, measuring.
No.
Now we're losing sight.
No.
I agree with that.
It needs, you need to have a goal. If what you're saying is true, then this, then it shouldn't be a goal.
Well, I disagree totally.
You need to have. Let's take one, the one that kinda irritates me is kids at risk, okay? Every year it comes up and says, we had immediate kids on risk, at kids at risk. Okay? I don't know what that means, I don't know what the categories are, I don't know where it is. But, I mean, if we had kids at risk, I'd like to see that we're actively trying to do something. So, you know, is there, is there a goal? Is there a, you know, so if you have a goal, you have to actually measure the steps to get there. I mean, we're not being unreasonable and saying, okay, over a five-year period, you know, we would like to have all this stuff online. So it's reasonable to say that, you know, maybe twenty percent of it'll get online, and it'll be active. Okay? And we can check that off. But to not have a goal and not have a check, I mean, if you're not gonna do it, then don't do it.
You misunderstood what I was saying. I wasn't suggesting to not have goals. I was suggesting that we just don't get too caught up in the calculating and the counting and the checking the boxes that we're losing sight of the big picture.
So, one thing I did before I sent that email is, you should've seen this spreadsheet I had first, it was minutia, and I was like, this is not reasonable. You know what I mean? So it is that word reasonable and obtainable, those are the most important things. We can't ask for this guy because you can't get it, and it's not realistic.
And we have to count on people who know this stuff and can say, well, this is reasonable or this isn't reasonable.
Right.
And they should be able to, at that point, tell us that over a five-year period, we can accomplish reasonably this, this, and this. Right now, we have nothing.
I agree, but we have to do that, but for some things that are kinda soft, like kids at risk, we're gonna have kids at risk every year.
Right.
So maybe the goal isn't something measurable, like having less kids at risk, it's more like, find another outreach program that might help us. I think that was an action item last year that you would put on the list, is to have, try to find more resources to help with our kids at risk.
Right.
So our goal is to try to partner with one more program, that could be your goal by the end of the year. You have now a successful partnership with one, so that's something.
That's a measurable goal.
That's a measurable goal, that's not minutia.
After, after a point in time, you can say, after three years, you can say, this didn't work. We need to go somewhere else.
Yeah.
What? I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm following where we are in all of this. What, which document are we reviewing here?
We're in this one, we're in the first goal.
District improvement.
District Improvement Plan, yes, the one that has a grid on it.
To sustain educational services.
Yeah, I have.
So at this point, just sort of a reality check on what we hope to accomplish tonight, it's eight o'clock, we still have executive session in front of us. At this point, there's been one action item suggested, which is that Michael add another column, if I understood this right, which has measurable outcomes to each of these things. Is that reasonable?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, I may come back with different steps, because I realize that if I can make it measurable, I have to make it more specific.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. It actually has to have steps, yeah, and say, you know, we can accomplish a percentage of this by, or it's something.
Right.
It's a success indicator.
Yeah. So, um, I mean, we, we already have indicators of success right here, but.
No, 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 we don't.
No, we have a category that says indicators of success.
Okay.
That's what technically you're saying.
Um, yeah. So maybe we, the next column over is going to say, um, measurement tool for indicators of success, or something like that. That's, uh, are people happy with ending the discussion here and sending off Michael to do that for our next meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
Actually, with all these initiatives that you have, I think same as the last thing we were talking about, unless we know where we're at today and what's been done, it's really hard to move forward. So even with this, you know, this one A, you know, this list, we need to know where you're at.
Yep.
Because we, I don't know. I mean, you just told us.
We, we did provide the status update.
Yeah.
That's in there previously to tell you what we've done, so, but I can be more clear, I can add that in this document, so people reading one document have it, sort of has a sense of, you're right.
You know, from what I read, we need just like a gap or whatever, you know, you need to know where you're at, and then how are you gonna get there?
Nancy?
Yes.
Can, can I ask a question about this? On this, on the strategic, I don't like this document, because I don't know what this document says to me, and I, I just don't, I don't, I don't like it. But one thing that I really would like to request again, that we remove, it, it's a district goal, is it your goal, or is it goals that have been vetted, or do they not have to be vetted?
So, let me just tell you, the, the original genesis of that document was a committee of eighty-five people that then got boiled down to a subcommittee of the then school committee. So that, the original document is about nine years old.
This.
The original.
This is a new one.
Yeah.
Okay. That is an iteration of that that's moving us based on work that's been done, so it's caught up to where we've been done.
Who did the work?
I did. It's a draft for this group. I mean, we could go back out and, and it could be kinda exciting to have another eighty-five people take a look at some of our work.
This is the piece I have an issue with. On this district goals, it says all day kindergarten for all school year seventeen, eighteen.
And that document was developed like a year ago, when we started that process in the budget.
But it's still out there.
Yep.
And it's in our packet, and it's misleading, and I don't think it's right to have it in there.
Well, it's your document, I mean, it's the document you were gonna have to discuss, we just haven't revised it.
But it came up last year, and it's still on there, so I just, I don't understand. Well, I mean, you say something, I don't, I don't, why don't we on record as saying, I want that taken off of there? Because it's very misleading. People look at it, and they think that is indeed the district's direction, and that's where we're going, and we have not determined that.
Correct. And that's why it's draft.
So where is that? Just help me.
It's, um, here. Here.
Draft strategic plan update.
So is this anywhere other than right here?
No.
Okay. So where's last year's? Does this go somewhere? Is this what's sent in the mail?
Good, good luck.
Is this sent in the mail? Like, what it, what happens to this?
You made this for us, right?
I made it for you.
But this is, who do you give this to?
I get that out of everybody.
I get it out of your little packets.
Yeah. So what is a student path, when you have student pathways, what does that mean?
That mean, that's talking about, for example, at our high school, having more defined clarity around course options for kids that are interested in, for example, science, technology, and engineering, and mathematics. Kids who are more interested in fine arts, really defining some pathways and courses that really propel kids to excel in those areas.
So this document, that's one, I'm glad you brought that up, because if we really wanted to make this more useful, or useful, STEM, it would be, you know, tell us what the classes are that are, because everybody knows what STEM means. I, I don't know what the point of this document is, I guess that's my question.
It's supposed to be.
I don't wanna pick it up.
A brief document that gets people to know what we're about as a district. It's a one-pager, you don't, you don't put that kinda detail on the one-pager.
Is it replacing this?
Yes, it would be replacing that.
No, you, no, you don't put, you don't, no, but you don't put, you don't define STEM. But I don't think anyone knows what that is.
I don't think so either.
But explain what your philosophy is, make a quick sentence or something, I don't know what the point of this document is. If, if it's yours, that's fine.
It's a draft.
Well, well, it's a draft that we've seen again.
We haven't gotten to it yet.
So who's gonna, who's gonna vet this?
This group.
We're gonna do this all?
So are we doing this now?
No, it wasn't on the agenda.
No, but it was in the packet to review.
Right.
Right?
Right?
Isn't that what's supposed to be doing, because we're gonna go one to?
We're throwing in goals one and two. And so far, we've established, I thought, that we were done talking about it for tonight, and that our next step on this is, Michael, it's going to add measurable, uh, what did I say it, it sounded good before.